Yes.
Thank you.
Mike's on. This is the Town of Farmington Planning Board meeting. Tonight, we'll follow the agendas that were on the table over there. We will be following the rules and procedures adopted by this board on January fourth of two thousand and twenty-three. The exits are this door over here, along with the one you came in. If there happens to be a reason to do that, follow Ron, he'll be the first one out, so not a problem.
I'll leave, just follow me.
And we do have a generator in case we do need one with the wind, you never know. Been one of those crazy days here, so we do have a generator, it'll take a couple of minutes, uh, seconds to kick in, so. Other than that, next item up is the approval of the minutes of the last meeting. Everybody get a chance to review them? Anybody have any questions or concerns? Have a motion to approve? Moved by Adrian, second to behind? Tim, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Okay. First order of business is PB zero-two-zero-three dash twenty-three preliminary site plan approval for Western New York Commercial Flex Space and Storage Facility. Come on up, give us your name, tell us a little bit about the project. Now, I know that you have provided a bunch of comments to the application, you have since addressed those. We're not going to review the addressed issues tonight since we got them really late, but we'll go through, talk about things, remember that I hopefully the staff told you, we need to do seeker. So it's a coordinated review, that takes thirty days, so we'll have to go through tonight and do that, but we'll give you as much feedback as we can tonight. Uh, so as you go forward, it'll be good to go. Okay, go ahead, tell us a little bit about what you're doing and where you're at.
Good evening, planning board members, staff and citizens of the Town of Farmington. My name's John Hato of Lantech Surveying and Engineering at Ridgeway Avenue in Rochester, New York. Just a little background information, we are representing Mr. Edward Simole in the audience and our architect for the project is Eric Ferry. He designed the two buildings, they're basically the prototypical. So on January twelfth, we submitted for preliminary site plan approvals. A little bit more background in line with area variances. We got an eighty, thirty-foot front yard setback variance in, and that was in July of twenty-two. And in, we also got a hundred foot to fifty foot in July of twenty-two. On September twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-two, we got a rezoning of the property from general business to general industrial, which allowed us to oppose this project. Site was designed with these factors in mind, um, in terms of setbacks to provide buffering area around perimeter of the property. Buildings on there that are functionally and efficiently and economically viable project. And I believe we've done that fairly well. We're minimizing minimizing impacts to the surrounding areas, neighborhoods of Route three-three-two. So we worked with the county a little bit on that, they have a concept about a gateway from Route three-three-two coming up through way going south and going north. So we're kind of making this look more diminished in terms of visuals and we presented some three-dimensional images of that. So there's eighteen units total, there's nine in each building, each unit's about eleven hundred square feet rental. They all have their own bathrooms and fire protection, overhead doors, exit doors, lighting, everything, they're each standalone units. They don't all have to be rented out to be for each individual one used, there'll be multiple different uses. Probably mostly small businesses, electrician, plumber, or something like that, but there also could be a remote storage area where somebody just stores it with merchandise or something for a while and it's just a transit place for for materials and so forth. So we're providing another visual thing around the outside of wood fence around the parking lot, so cars won't be seen from the highway. We've had completed the EAF as you mentioned. You received a lot of staff comments and I did provide Ms. Sarah Mitchell with a response letter, response to those comments. And we complied with every single one of them, basically. A couple of questions we have, but nothing serious. There's a lot of details, we had to update the two thousand and twenty-two details, we did all that. We received Mr. Lance Bravant's comments from MRB this afternoon. And we see those as being a little bit more final approval details we gotta iron out and I think we can work those issues out. One of the big features is we're going to use an infiltration base instead of standing water for stormwater management and we did some tests digging out there and Mr. Bravant had some questions about infiltration and I, we dug down ten feet and we didn't hit one drop of water. It's like dry as a desert, it's a very peculiar area. I've got soil sample, did infiltration testings. And we can provide a more detailed outline for you, but it's gonna, it's gonna drain like crazy, just a really unique little area, I think it's like a it's an outwash plain from a glacier or something like that, but we dug down deep and it was bone dry. So it's very impervious, so, or pervious. Way the site worked out, there were some questions about parking. This is the most parking we can get, there's like forty-one space on the surface, but hypothetically, there's another eighteen, if we could park cars or vans inside the storage. But we feel that there's plenty of parking, even though the code doesn't have a specifically a requirement for this type of use, because it's kind of new, newer thing, we're kind of working with the town to uh, fine tune those requirements, but we think we've got plenty of parking space. We figure maybe two employees on a good day for each unit, something like that, again, a certain percentage of them are going to be pure storage with people just come and go and don't need parking, so we'll, we'll see how it works out. We, we touched up all the specs from the town staff, the way they wanted them with the DR fourteen PVC for the, for the water lines and STR twenty-one for the sanitary sewers. One thing we did notice is initially, on the initial plan, we provided some more evergreen trees out here. It was gateway perspective area, allegedly we can't plant, we have to plant trees on our property, otherwise this is gonna have to be like maybe a humidity oriented planting project or a boy scout project or something like that, but we're not allowed to plant stuff off of our property. But we also are preserving quite a bit of decent standing timber here that's gonna help screen it in the summer. In the winter, you will probably see through the leaves, the trunks and stuff like that, but someday we could leave some evidence here, uh, that would help a lot break that up. So that, that's where we're at right now.
All right, process we'll do is we'll go to staff and we'll go from there, okay?
Right.
Ron.
Okay, uh, the first step in the process is complying with the state Environmental Quality Review Act. Tonight, I've drafted a resolution classifying the action as unlisted and identifying your intent to conduct a coordinated review and be designated lead agency. I've also provided you the draft project notification review letter and the response form. Responses are due back to me by Monday, the thirteenth of March in time for the planning board meeting on the fifteenth. I doubt that there will be any objections to planning board being lead agency. And I also think that because we've had numerous opportunities to coordinate this with the PRC process that the involved agency should have view if any comments at all. So with that, if that's the case, I'll get you the resolutions on Tuesday. I know it's a short window, but it's all pretty much statutory in nature.
Right.
And then you can continue your deliberations and take action as you see fit.
And in the meantime, in those thirty days, staff will also review the updated documents that you sent, see if there are any additional comments and we'll go from there.
We'll have a PRC meeting on.
PRC, you'll go through with staff, so. Okay, cool.
Yeah.
Anything else?
No.
And?
Yeah, I was actually just gonna cover that. We are happy to hear that you responded back already. Staff hasn't had an opportunity to review that yet, but if it's true that you answered all of our questions, that's phenomenal. But I think what's gonna happen is we'll put it on the PRC schedule on March second. And that will give the opportunity to, for staff to talk about it again and make sure that everything was addressed, because there was quite a few comments. I think there was seventy or so just from staff, not including MRB's letters, so. But with all that being said, I think that before March second, I will make sure staff has opportunity to review your comments back and we'll discuss that at that meeting and then that will put staff in a good situation before the March fifteenth meeting to give a recommendation back to the planning board.
Sounds like a plan. Tim?
Yeah, I mean, my only comments were about the parking there, I mean, it's you're telling your businesses are gonna be in there, I just don't wanna see the overflow parking coming out in Park and Ride and, you know, that's the only thing I'd be concerned about. You don't think there'll be that many employee, you know, I don't know, we talked about like landscape company, maybe get in there. I wouldn't want to see the trailers out there or something like that.
Yeah, just make sure it stays on property and doesn't get over into Park and Ride. Seems like an easy place to people to slip some extra stuff.
Not that, you know, if an employee comes there and parks for the day, it wouldn't be a big deal and there's nothing I could do about that anyhow, but.
Okay, cool, anything else? Lance?
Well, no, first I'd like to apologize to the applicant, because I, MRB group did issue a comment letter last week, it just never made it to the engineer and to the applicant, so I do apologize for that. And our comment, I guess, most of the comments that we have, because it's a flex space, there's gonna be many different kind of uses that we understand. First, I think in Town of Farmington of this type of project, so what I was asking for initially was maybe there's, and maybe you provided and I just didn't get a copy of it. There's a letter kind of describing the type of uses you're anticipating, the reason is this, for water, for sewer, for parking, for storage. As part of our review, we, in, in stormwater, we need to know what kind of, kind of equipment and material are gonna be on site. So whatever, I realize that you don't know them all, but whatever you're anticipating, just a list of them and that way I can look at that and say, okay, this is what we're anticipating, this is what we gotta look at, that would be helpful. Most of my comments are kind of like final, what you would typically see as part of final, but in Farmington, a lot of those final comments are part of preliminary. So whatever calculations you have, infiltration testing you have, if you can give that to me during the next thirty-day window while we're going through the seeker and most certainly would help with that preliminary approval process. So I think from my standpoint, I think this is a good project, I think I'm pretty comfortable with what was provided, it's just updating it with some of those additional material that, that I need to look at in order to justify and approve the stormwater stuff. That's where we're at.
Good, thanks. Fire? Guys won't have any problem there, you'll be fighting it from outside there probably anyway, won't be able to, won't probably go in. So, okay, all right. Any content, any comments from the audience? Applicant, any, anything you'd like to throw in for the board, actually make some comments? Perfect. Yeah, that'll help, that'll help MRB, you just didn't looking at the bigger picture then. Okay, let's start over here with Aaron, go ahead, Aaron. I know you, Aaron had some additional questions.
Yeah, so starting off with the, your driveway going into the park and ride. This goes in with the, the parking as well, the parking line. I gotta assume eventually there's tractor trailers going in and out. I mean, with, with a business, you're storing stuff, there might be deliveries.
We can get a fire truck in. In, in around for safety, but there's no intention to bag a trailer in here. Might come again and unload here, drive and bring stuff in, but we're not gonna bring a tractor trailer in here.
Parking it right there is going to, outside your property in the parking lot, you're gonna impede on the parking. I'm, if, if, if you wanna have tractor trailers, I, I think your driveway has to be conducive to that and also if one gets in there, are your lines and your parking, parking areas allowing that tractor trailer to turn around? Okay. That's another, I don't, I don't, I don't want to see this, Tim was saying impeding on the parking. And then I'm assuming.
And the intent right now is not to have tractor trailers. Box trucks is maybe, but box trucks, yeah, but not necessarily.
It'll be tough in that location, just because that parking ride, hit or miss, and you catch it on a bad day, you're not gonna get it.
Um, now, also, Tim, uh, that drive, the driveway off a plaster mill. Is that, that driveway off a plaster mill, is that accessible for, for bigger vehicles?
You know, there, there's nothing on the books that I know of that, I mean, a tractor trailer, I mean, there's one that parks down there now, but I can't get rid of because there's nothing in any law and more tells me I can't make up the law that protects the ten for parking.
You, you don't own and maintain that parking right, correct?
Yes, we do, we do, we do maintain.
Um, and then, uh.
Two seconds.
I just want to have the applicant add in the turning radiuses going the fire truck movement. Just so that we can verify that, I, I understand about the tractor trailers, but we do need to make sure the fire truck.
What, what size truck or what?
I would, I mean.
Show the biggest that you can get.
I mean, I don't think the latter would be so important, but. But one of. So at least, I think Lance is right, show the biggest one that you could fit so that we're aware of. That we can relay that information to the fire department.
Cool, thanks. Aaron?
Lighting, I noticed. I, I was, I was a little worried about the lighting in the middle of the parking lot, seems like there's not, there's not, there's not a lot of spillage of lighting into the middle lots where people would park.
Well, I didn't want to really put holes in there, basically just by about turning and stuff like that, but we were instructed to put lights over the doors right there.
Right.
And the man doors, so there's tons of light in front where you're gonna be loading your vehicle or unloading, coming to work and working. There's also lights on the back of the doors and we had about five eighteen footers, we had one here, 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 and here, the new plans that I sent. I tried to show the new lights. Uh, we're looking at like a one-foot candle max, you don't, you don't want it super bright, it's gonna be, hours are gonna be, you know, seven to eight, it's not gonna be midnight activity or in the middle of the morning or anything like that.
Okay.
And plus, we don't want it to glare up and the new LED lights, there's really no such thing as like uplights anymore, everybody's, everybody's down like Farmington or the burned area over there on ninety-six, that's what we're looking for, that low downward lighting, that's what you're gonna get with the LED.
My issue with that was just security.
It will be secured at night as well, there's a slide gate across here, get people out and we got a fence around the corner to corner of the building.
I'm sorry, Doug, can you make sure that you show those foot candles and the plans? Yep. And the future plans, they don't have to, here at this moment, just, I'm not overly concerned of lighting, but it does help us identify if there is these dark spots or not. Okay.
Okay, Adrian?
Uh, yeah, so the lighting, I had one, but that was kind of answered, so we'll go with that right now. There's not gonna be night, like, I mean, the gate is gonna be locked at night or something, or is there access at all the time, twenty-four-seven, or is it like? So they'll have access if they got there at ten o'clock at night to drop off stuff after a job, it's not like they, people wouldn't be there, but most, most of them are probably not, but, okay. And then, um, my biggest concern, Doug will probably help us out a lot on this, is I'm glad that we're seeing, keeping the existing trees along three-thirty-two, I'm just concerned that I don't know what's gonna be existing, if there's a lot of ash trees in there or not, and I hope there's enough buffer a little bit to.
Surprisingly, uh, there, there are, there are ash trees in there, but there's some other decent stuff too, some maple or apple, maple, shag bar hickory, some other two, there's like a basswood that's like four foot in diameter, wild stuff. There's a lot of under, undergrowth too.
Right, so when some of those ash go down and something else will come up highly, hopefully, or just keep it screened. I was looking forward to the evergreens on the corner, but I understand the state's regulations, what we, you can and can't do.
Yeah.
Other than that, I think right now I don't have very much.
Okay, Doug?
So I got a few questions, I think what Lance brought up about that statement of operations is very helpful, just for a lot of these questions. Originally I was picturing like some plumbers or electricians basically writing this out and using it at the shop, you know, in between projects or whatever. You know, so I guess with the first question I have is, it's more geared for businesses than not like mini storage things, so do you plan on having any of these things available for rent, like RVs or outside stores or you know, RVs, boats, that type of stuff, that, I mean, I have lights outside, but I think some of it around RVs, indoor storage. Classic cars, Honda cars, we run a thousand square feet of our classic cars. I guess my only concern with the outside.
Outside storage, I don't think that's anything we're interested in at all at this point.
It gets also, I've got, my bigger concern would be the same way parking spaces that might be needed for the other businesses that are in there.
Right, they can park them in the inside all we want.
Inside, yeah, absolutely, yeah. For each unit or, or even have, you know, plenty of spaces out there occupied by people that are not renting units and, you know.
I just really like.
Hi.
And you're seeing a lot of them, and that kind of facility more for storage.
Yeah, so, yeah, but it's, it's the same money outside. It's kind of ancillary to the businesses that are in there then, for the, for that you, you're not gonna market it, but maybe storage for just a person coming in off the road to.
Yeah, that's a lot of space.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, but I was thinking about the outside space. Inside spaces, boy, runs it, it might be a way into the dirt.
You don't want any outside storage, that's, that's a no-no.
Okay. Okay, well, we're just. So vehicle, yeah, so vehicles parking in the, inside the units, I think. Let's see, the turning movements, actually, is another question, we can very address that one. Let's see, is there any building signage you're thinking of, or is it just ground?
We have ground signage, so.
Yeah, I saw the ground side, just was curious, because you, you weren't gonna have building on it. Elevation.
No, no, no signs.
Yeah.
Okay. Yep, yeah, I saw that one, I just wondered, you know, because usually we'll have businesses that have signs on the buildings also, you know, so.
There are, I don't know if you discussed it or not, but one of the friends who had these buildings had a small bodyguard or by, well, incredible beach door that says, you know, what was in there, if they had.
And I'll internal though to the site of this, I don't think.
On-site.
Yeah, and, yeah, you're not advertising it on the outside. That's, that's.
Say like Doug's electric, I'd go over that bay, no, that's pretty.
Yeah. Yeah, 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 I mean, that's a correction.
As long as they're not putting signs all along plaster mill, we're in good shape.
Yeah, that's, that's a good way I would go with that. You know, the, the, I guess the, the only other third that would have would be of, of the loading and unloading. I mean, we typically require a, a loading space of, you know, any business. Um, you know, so that, that's something that might be addressed or something, find a spot for, uh, an unloading space.
Yeah, that's, this is new flex.
It is, it's, that's hard to.
Challenge, yeah.
Yeah. That's why I wasn't too sure, and I think that statement, oh, that's kind of narrow on that now, but what is truly required of this. I, I wanna do something.
I mean, most of the site space that UPS and FedEx. You don't usually see the.
The larger.
The larger, I mean, they need loading docks and all that stuff, they don't want a smaller. I mean, I'm not saying like FedEx might bring a little small straight truck, one of those little, still a little.
Yes.
Wheel or the back, but with a little lift gate, but it's far and few between, like a smaller little company.
Yeah.
Yeah, because they got the pallet. Obviously, then some way they'd have to be there to open the gate too, so I mean, the guy that owns, that's renting the space would have to be there to open the gates.
Is the gate gonna be open during normal business hours or?
Always closed.
Always closed, okay.
Oh, okay.
So it'd be just sort of like.
Yes.
Storage facilities around here where the gates are closing for, you show up to the line of unit.
But again, I think that statement clarified a lot of questions in this certain way I have about that.
Yep.
The only other thing I have are kind of, you know, one of my comments was on like full detail. I think there was two of them, one that my show was six inches of build. Ultimately. What height of hole is out there, so one shows three foot, one shows six inches.
Oh, for the base.
For the base, yeah, so it's just.
Clarify. Right.
Yeah, there's, there's some details actually on there.
Yeah, we'll, we'll put a three footer in there and then the maximum height will be eighteen on that.
Yeah, I did, I think they were just almost split, like one with the low ground, maybe one with the low ground.
Okay.
Um, and the only other thing was, was kind of about the ash trees. With the ones that might be, you know.
Sick or.
Die or can they take those down while you're in there clearing, I mean, it might be what, I mean, it just isn't worthwhile to look at before they like come down near the buildings.
And I see.
Well, some of them I think you might just have.
Yeah.
I have a bunch of ash on my property, I've had some, like crazy recently and. And they fall over, they just fall over, so.
Yeah.
Some of those are pretty close passing through the buildings.
Right.
Yeah.
And clean up the ash trees, because even if they're currently okay, they're not gonna be okay for long.
Yeah, of course I'm getting.
Yeah.
Yeah. Cool, yeah, yeah, I would definitely just look at, you know, again, looking out, but I've seen it the last two or three years.
Okay, anything else, Doug?
Um, the, the only other thing was a color sign plan or.
Yeah. Make sure it's colored, so we see what the colored sign plan is gonna be.
Yeah.
Eric, did you, did you have an idea for the color sign?
Yeah, I think. Pointing, been, we'll have to see a base on the sign and collect, um, wood sign, but white painted and then lettering, uh. Name and length to that student, so it doesn't give that.
Yeah.
Look inside. Oh, monument sign.
Back in landscaping. Cause of the type of what it is, yeah, it's off the road. All right, Tim.
Well, the only additional question I have, and not that this is gonna be a issue for the climate anymore, but it's all removal. I, I don't, from looking at, at this plan here, I don't see.
Yeah, that's a good point. I advise the plans to move the fence about sixty dollars behind the pavement.
Okay.
The guy who's plowing.
The fence.
Just, uh.
And there are inlets too, that capture.
Show store, snow stores, areas.
All right, we just know that it's been addressed.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, back to staff, anything else? Adrian.
Are you gonna have a dumpster on site for the tenants?
No, there's.
Yes, sir. We have one. Is that the, that's what that is? Doesn't say that.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
It's gonna be.
Well, we don't give a shit.
Screen back end.
He's gonna have it.
Was it?
No, cause it'll be inside with fence, right? So just the element, yeah.
Yeah, I'm not worried about screening because you're gonna have the full.
Fence around.
Fence around it, you can't see behind it, so.
Right.
I don't care if they see the dumpster inside the parking lot, cause you'll have that whole fence right in the back of it, so it's not like you need to screen.
Right.
Six foot. I'm not sure what's allowed.
Six max or eight?
Oh, this is an interesting site. Uh, a security fence, which we're gonna classify this as, can go up to eight. But it has to be a security fence because it's in the front yard. When a commercial lot has a security, then you can go up to an eight foot fence. If we call it a decorative fence or something other category, it would only be a four foot fence, and that's. From what my staff has reviewed on that, is security because we're, we're locking everything up and he's putting a gate across the entrance, so. Uh, we're calling it a security fence, so that would allow up to an eight foot fence.
Then the material of that fence does not matter?
Nope.
Just, okay.
Guess that's up to how you want to do it, you want six.
Yeah. Okay, I think that's pretty well what we have right now. So again, the process is we, tonight, we'll declare ourselves. Uh, intent to be lead agency, we'll get the seeker started, it's a thirty day process. Once we get the information back, we can get you back on the board on a, a planning board meeting or preliminary. And we'll, we can get that done and approved, and then give you a time to submit that, get it signed, and then bring final. In pretty much at the same time, get it rolling and get it going. It's not that bad once, especially since you've. Gotten tons of comments already, you've already addressed many of the comments, and uh now we gotta do seeker. Oh, we got one more.
Sorry, what are the buildings made out of here on this rendering? Like, is this block or is this metal or what?
No, it's metal spot, um, metal panel, it's not a black metal roof.
So it's like a, well, looks like a pole barn.
Pole barn, pole barn design, I was twenty-one and X tier wall, aren't four D on the ceiling. We're putting a rock scraper system, putting all the, technical lines up in the attic. Moving down into the space. Um, you do not need any fire retardant balls, crinklers. And travel distances, they're giving twenty feet from the center to keep doors, man doors. The front and back, they have a panic hardware.
Those can.
Door, holders.
It's gonna be brown with like black roof, black doors.
Dark brown.
Black roof.
Black roof, and probably put a few people out in the corner.
Right, but those are facing the inside parking.
Okay, so what we have first, I believe first, stop me if I'm wrong, Ron, is we have a. Um. A resolution with a declaration of intent to be lead agency for coordinated review. And for making determination of significance upon set action, that's the first one.
First one is classifying the action as on most.
That's all in the same resolution though, right? Okay.
I didn't hear you say that.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's all in the same resolution, there's one resolution to declare ourselves. Intent to be lead agency and making determination of significance.
And classify.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that. Seeker classification, you're right, I missed that word. Classification and declaration of intent to be designed, designated lead agency, as well as a determination of significance. So that's the first resolution. So board, have you read that resolution? Are you okay? Do I have a motion to approve that resolution? Waive the reading and approve it. Motion by Tim, second by. Doug, any other comments? Clerk take a roll call vote.
Lucy.
Aye.
Phil Beattie.
Aye.
Aaron Sweeney.
Aye.
Adrian Bellas.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next item up is, and I guess I better read this better. Um, establishment of coordinated review and public review period resolution, and uh. If I could get a motion to waive the reading and approve that resolution. Moved by Adrian, second by.
Eric.
Aaron, any other comments? Clerk take a roll call vote.
Lucia.
Aye.
Phil Beattie.
Aye.
Karen Sweeney.
Aye.
Adrian Bellas.
Aye.
Aye, okay, we have established the coordinator review, we've established our intent to be lead agency. We've done classification, we've done the determination of significance, all in these resolutions, so.
We have done the.
Well. Or making a determination of significance?
Or banking.
Okay. All right, we've done what we needed to do today, and uh we don't need anything else on this project, right, Ron?
Well, you're good to go.
Okay, we're good to go for that project, so next thing you'll work with staff, keep working with staff, making sure those. Renderings are up to speed for your next submission for preliminary, we're good to go. Appreciate the work.
March fifteenth.
We're thinking for March fifteenth, but you work with staff, you'll make sure you get everything in on, in with, with them on time for us, okay? Thanks, guys, appreciate it. Okay, Ron, next item up, we had, I thought we had another board action, I thought we had the extension.
That is on for March first meeting. Okay. Guys, uh, needing extra time for MRB, Justin Case, so we. Did it in precaution for March first, it is ready, but.
Okay.
We don't have it for tonight.
All right, I just wanted to.
What was wrong?
I was confused. Okay, then we're up to open discussion, Ron.
Okay. Um. Frank E. Police over at Redfield Road.
Yes.
Commercial Drive.
Yes.
Nine and six. He originally wanted to think about. Coming in with a project that would put townhouses along the east side of Commercial Drive.
Correct.
And, and uh. He, or discussed it with the builder. That, the, the other residential portions. And the builder said because of what's on the west side of, of Commercial Drive, it would be a difficult sale. Okay. So Frank has been thinking about it, and he's come back with a proposal. To um reduce the number of uh buildings. Professional office buildings along the east side of Commercial Drive from six to five. He's also uh requesting some other things that he wants to keep, like separating that single family house. Uh, from the project, keeping it for residential purposes. And uh, all of which, you know, um. Back the amendment to the incentive zoning overall plan that was approved. So I sent an email back to him today, copied in everybody, uh, Ed, you got a copy?
I did.
And basically said, you know, here's what you need to do, here's the steps that are involved, you gotta amend the overall plan. Gotta go back to the town board for recall and amendment of the resolution. It's got to come to here for a report and recommendation.
Right.
Ultimately, uh, a decision by the town board whether to honor the request or not. If they do, then detailed preliminary uh plans for those. Five lots along the east line, he is still keeping the, the sixth lot. Up there at the uh intersection of Redfield Drive and, and Commercial, next to the entrance to uh. Um, the building place next door. So. That's in the works, we'll see how fast it materializes, he thinks that. Uh, taking out one of the lots allows him to widen the footprint of the lot. And allows him more open space and more parking and better stormwater management. Provision, so we'll, we'll just see where that goes. Now, the, the other.
And my comment too, I think you caught it in your letter, is it'd be nice if. Two buildings would share a common drive onto Commercial.
Right.
With cross-assesement, so that we'd have less curb cuts on Commercial. If they can work it out, I think that would be a nice way to go.
Yeah, I did listen to you.
Yeah, I see, I saw you did.
Yeah.
No, I didn't say I was surprised.
Um, uh, just an update for you on Farmington Market Center. We're still waiting to hear back from the applicant, Mr. Ingrassia. Um, as far as the other parties involved with the signalized intersection. Uh, we've met with all three, um, they have told us they have no concerns with the. allocations of distribution and the costs, they're half, you know, comfortable with Fisher's estimates, which is good because. Fisher's is a well-established transportation engineering firm. Um, we're still waiting to, to hear back, and I understand that early next week, there's gonna be a meeting with. Mr. Ingrassia and his team, so hopefully, maybe next week we'll hear something. Um, the other thing that has come up. Is, uh, I received a phone call Friday afternoon on the way home, about five o'clock from, um, John Gabrieli. Uh, regarding the electric car company. Corner, and uh. He wants to have a meeting with his attorneys and town attorneys and supervisor and everybody except the planning. Um. And, and uh, try to figure out what needs to be done to uh move this project along. So I'm sending out a, uh, an email response back to him tomorrow, basically. Uh, reminding him of your, uh, let's see, let's see, the, um, October fifth. Of planning board resolution, which called for certain things to be done, which hadn't been done when he came back to you.
Right.
And I also did a little research with the. Meetings, there's been uh four PRC meetings since then. Uh, they've not attended any of them, they've not responded to anything that was in the minutes. And so the urgency really is. All of a sudden becoming their important urgency. Uh, and we basically have a problem in the giggle. That they need to get that lot into a legal conforming law. And apparently the only way to do it is to uh. Do a lot line adjustment of the property around that manufactured home unit and get it out their property.
I would think that would be the easiest way, for sure.
Well, it doesn't take a lot of rocket science to figure that out, but anyways, we said. I volunteered Dan and I would meet with him, but here's what you gotta do.
Don't invite me, please.
Get, get it done. So, um, you know, I also pointed out to him that the likelihood of. The town supervisor attending wasn't very real because the supervisor doesn't stick his nose in where he doesn't want. Where it's not warranted, and number two, uh, you know, we have a schedule of meeting that, uh, agendas. And uh, you know, you gotta get on board with that. So, that's basically that, you'll get a copy.
Yeah, please.
Uh.
You can send us a copy. It's a good, it's, I just read it tonight, it's a good letter.
So, uh. Peter looked at it today, Dan has blessed it today, and uh, we're gonna send it out tomorrow.
Cool.
That, for now, that's basically it, uh. Any questions from the board?
Not at this point, I don't think. Dan.
All right, uh, your March first meeting, uh, Mandarino preliminary site plan to build a house over on New Michigan, if you remember back, you guys.
Yep.
Threw the three lot subdivision over there, uh, now they're coming back in to build a house over there. Uh, the other project on for first is the button final site plan, you guys preliminary not too long ago. Uh, that's back in front of us for the finals. And then the last thing that we talked about was the Loomis Road Industrial Park. Um, that has, we have received the letter for a ninety day extension. The other piece of the pie was they were doing a small modification to the stormwater pond. Uh, that has gone to MRB and that looks like a simple field change. More than anything else, an amendment that would have to start the process over, so. Uh, Lance has commented back on that.
And I believe, stop me when I'm wrong, Lance, it's just basically making that, those ponds a little shallower due to. Continued review of the area of the uh pervious surface. They don't need a pond quite so deep, which is good, cause it was pretty deep if I remember right. Yeah, they, this, this design is a much better design than the previous one, they were able to. Still meet the intent of the other one, uh, but, but provided, provided us, I think, a much safer uh facility. So I, I did, and I, I got to jump here, but I, I did provide an email back to the town stating that. Uh, we, we completed a review, we feel that the plans that have been provided are still substantially conforming to the original plan that was, that was provided to you. There isn't any, in our opinion, substantial changes that are being provided, so we're pretty confident with the plan that's been provided. Right, and I didn't have a problem bringing the extension to us as long as MRB had a chance to also review the pond changes, which they have. Ron?
I committed the town board last night, closed the public hearing on the, um.
Hours.
Hours incentive rezoning project. We did hear from the county DPW. Who has gone out and done some additional work, uh, along the Red Road. And uh, perhaps Peter or, or you who were there can better explain what was stated.
Yeah, they, they basically found that. When natural, uh, national fuels brought their gas pipeline through that area, they disturbed a berm. Which was allowing the creek to. Uh, flow east. Or flow west.
Instead of east.
Yeah, instead of, and yet, when they did their work, they. The integrity of that berm was compromised, so that there is now water going west or east as well as west, so it's not. so that there is now water going west or east as well as west. So it's not the original plan, which seemed to work for years. But in two thousand nine started not working as well and now we know why. So they're working, they were gonna have a meeting today, I believe, with the National, National Fuels, that's along with the county, along with the, uh, res, or the owner of the property, to see if they could come up with a plan to fix that berm and do some of that. Ron?
Yeah, I did receive, did you get a phone call today from the gentleman, um, John? From county DPW that was here last.
Chris.
Chris. Okay, Chris Day. And, and, uh, he said they did meet. The county was receptive to making the, the repairs. Uh, Chris is going to be working with the property owners to obtain the necessary easements to get the equipment in there and to make that. And he's gonna keep Peter and I informed, uh, as this proceeds. So, uh, kudos to county DPW, they.
Yeah, that's one of the things that certainly, um, the Powers project shouldn't make it worse, but certainly has a potential to make it worse. So this will help that along. Okay, we did this, we did this. Anything else, Lance?
Um, no. Again, um, yeah, not much to add tonight. Okay. Getting some spring work done and it looks like there's gonna be.
There you go.
No.
Crazy, crazy time.
Pete?
Um, we had a town board meeting last night and what it was, our fourth quarter sales tax was up twelve percent from last year.
Nice.
All good.
Yep. Public, any comments you wanna make? Okay, just wanna double check. Um, I don't have anything else. The board have anything?
You have anybody online?
Anybody else? Anybody online have anything for us?
Anybody online have any for us?
Please online tonight.
Nobody's online, okay. Uh, motion to adjourn by Aaron, seconded by Tim. All in favor? Aye. Okay, thank you, guys.